In the meeting. All right, any need for executive session?
I've got four things, Madam Chair. One, legal, having to do with the highway department, et cetera. Two personnel matters, one, the recreation department, and one, the select board. And finally, one contractual matter involving police that Mike Warfel is here to talk about.
All right, and then need to amend the agenda. We're taking at least those two items off.
Yes, that's right, the two Kate Kennedy matters. She said she'd call back when she is able to and reschedule.
All right.
Make motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything on the select board minutes of March 17th? And the dog hearing minutes of that same day? Any corrections?
Joseph, you gotta sign those and send them along.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try not to get caught up.
That's both sets that are going around, Alicia.
Well, three sets.
Okay, there's liquor board too, right?
Liquor board, select board, and dog hearing. All of March 17th.
Yeah, look at him, he's got his own corner.
What's that, what happened?
Get his own corner.
Oh, yeah.
Wait, you got to six feet.
Been promoted to a corner office.
He even got a window.
With a man whore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't think I give you a chance to do that again? You're going to time down, I can't just separate them. Sign that one?
Nope.
Yeah, I didn't know I signed this.
Yeah, I'll send this back to you.
I'll give it back if you all.
Send it back to you.
At that time.
The chair can cover in the select board any way she chooses, but I suggest a fine system.
A fine system?
Right outside now?
Should be here all alone.
Yeah.
You mean they don't pay us nothing? Not paying attention.
Any questions on the orders?
I see here on the police truck storm damage, did we have insurance that covered that?
We did, we paid $3,490 and we got a check for $2,490 because we have a $1,000 deductible. But that was much lower than the original estimates. We were fearing something like $10 or $15 at first.
Well, they said the headliner, the inside headliner was $2,500 and the roof initially was $8,000.
Holy cow.
So when they fixed it, they found they couldn't have to do so much.
And we were lucky, Joe, that the fact that Dodge parts were available because they said if you have an accident with a Ford truck right now, you'll wait a year to get parts.
Yeah, is that right?
They were available and it took them just over a month, I think.
That's right.
Yeah, we picked it up, we picked up stuff.
That's good.
And I'm returning the brand new car tomorrow morning.
Now, there's a waste, I believe it's the wastewater plant camera, maybe?
Yes, that's a.
Of the new?
That's a grant funded security system that they have at the wastewater treatment facility.
That's a new.
No expense to the town.
Yeah.
It's paid by the grant provider, which in this case, I think is BLCT.
John, what's the license agreement? The New England Municipal?
That's, that's the annual service they provide to the town as support for our software system.
Okay.
It is substantially more than it had been. They explained it in a long letter we had about 15, 16 months ago that it was going to be necessary for them to raise rates because of cloud conversion issues and trying to find better ways to store all the data that they collect.
Okay. Any questions?
Send them along. There's four sets, Joe. Two from tonight and two from. While we're chatting, Kate Kennedy was taking offense at posting a 35 mile an hour speed limit sign on property. Remember that intersection and I think Chad was just being proactive to post the speed limit sign applies all over town.
Right.
But there never used to be one and she feels that by posting it, you're encouraging people to go faster than they might want to go.
Okay.
So we may resolve this place in removing that sign. And it's never been even in the past. Faster than they would think of going. So I don't think that'll be.
I agree, the one that went from a Y to a T.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
I may know that Joe missed one.
Jeez.
We missed one.
I got another one I missed.
You're just trying to make me feel good.
Tried to make it easy for you guys and you still mess it up.
Yeah. I was trying to teach an old dog new tricks.
Why did we put you in the corner?
He was going this way.
I know.
Left, right, left, right, left, right.
We're done with COVID, we could just get a round table with a lazy sus.
There you go.
That's it.
Then you name it, lazy board.
The whole.
Here is payroll, the last piece of yours.
All the other tables.
Oh, they're in the basement. Yeah, I should leave them. We should think about a town sale.
Maybe. Historical society is having one and I think that, and Demais, you need to get in on that.
Town Lloyd, if there's a town Lloyd.
Yeah.
There's people from everywhere.
Town manager's important. Thank you, it's been three weeks, so there's quite a lot to update everybody on. First, at the Saltsheds site, there was a meeting on March 18th by all the key players confirming that the project was substantially complete. Town manager has sent in the building's warranty to the manufacturer. All that remains is the final confirmation that grass is growing vigorously in the area at issue with it having been seeded and mulched already. Then we will submit our next request for V-Trans reimbursement of their 80% share of the overall project cost. Depot Hill pump station project is complete except for site restoration again, mulching and seeding to be done now that weather is improving. There are still the matters in the overall bond funded project of purchasing the required power generator. And secondly, automating the aeration at the sewage at the wastewater treatment facility. This work is expected to be done this spring or summer. The highway crew plans to begin work on or about Monday, April 12th to perform repairs to the Depot Hill covered bridge consisting of removing the existing deck materials, surface boards, and installation of hemlock running boards over the travel portion of the deck. Advisory signage has been up at the site for several days and the town has reached out to OMEA, Florence Crush Stone Police, the fire department, and Pittsburgh First Response with that information. We're still expecting to see Daniel's construction to come to make repairs to the bridge deck of Kendall Hill Rhodes Bridge in May or June, obviously after we're done on the Depot Hill repair project. Meanwhile, OMEA has already sent the town its pledge to check in the amount of $30,000 as its contribution toward the project. We appreciate that very much. The new town highway department truck cabin chassis has been delivered to Viking Seves or Sevis for the body's installation. On March 29th, that was the deadline for submission of materials for consideration to serve as the town's consultant to look at a possibility of future sidewalk projects, a sidewalk scoping project, basically. The sidewalk committee will meet remotely on Friday, April 9th at 1:00 with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, which is our project manager, and V-Trans to review the three submissions we received so we can thereafter make a hiring recommendation to the select board. On Tuesday, March 31st, the town manager met with the county forester, which is also serving as the town's forester on its, on its town forest property to review and discuss his proposal to adopt an updated forestry management plan. A new plan is required every 10 years or so for our 290 acre parcel in the vicinity of the town's water springs up on Chittenden on Mountain at Quacken. A copy of the plan has been included in the select board packets. It has been 10 years since the town last allowed a timber harvest in the area. And Kyle Mason is recommending that the town wait another 10 years before the timber harvest, next timber harvest. The Gagnon family has provided evidence of compliance with the select board's ruling requiring them to humanely put down their dog Harley. According to both the Gagnons and their veterinarian, Harley was quite ill when he was brought in. A bid season is here and the town has recently solicited bids for A, groundskeeping and lawn care, B, fuel, and C, paving. Bid results will soon be presented to the select board for consideration. The damaged police cruiser, again, which was struck by that tree limb on the evening of our town meeting budget presentation, has been retrieved from the body shop and we're pleased to have it back in service. We will return, as Chief Warfel mentioned before the meeting, we will return the used cruiser to the town of Brandon. And they, of course, were generous enough to lend us one of their cruisers while our truck was in the garage for repairs. The cost of the repairs was $3,430.90. We'll be down receiving a check from our insurance carrier unless our $1,000 deductible. The folks at Middlebury Fence have come back to tackle the punch list items we gave them. And everyone now seems to be pleased with the final product. So payment, it will be forthcoming for the 10% that we withheld until they did that final work. The folks at Pittsburgh Village Farm tell me that they're putting the final touches on their grant application with which the town has provided some assistance. And we expect to submit this in the next few days before the Wednesday deadline, next Wednesday. In tonight's packet, you will see some security upgrade quotes from Royal Security. First, one customized for the town of Pittsburgh. Second, a comparable system, slightly larger, for the larger building at West Rutland. And the town manager in West Rutland was happy enough, was nice enough to share that with us for comparison purposes. I would suggest we chat about that at the next meeting. V-Trans and the University of Vermont are working together to do a study of the effectiveness of those flashing beacon crosswalk signs, for example, the one by the Catholic Church across Route 7. And they'll be posting traffic monitors for about a week, sometime between April 13th and May 15th at that location and also at the Pittsburgh Route 7 intersection with Plains Road as they know that Dollar General plans to install one then, there later when they get that project going. So if you see a camera posted near those intersections, don't be alarmed, it's just information gathering by V-Trans and UVM. In lieu of their regular community issues team meetings, OMEA has provided a written summary or written report of their activities, which is included in tonight's packet. It makes for some interesting reading. OMEA hopes to resume their in-person team gatherings, which take place about three times a year in the summer and or fall. And tonight, in the packets, there are three things to gather your interest at least. First is the governor's reopening order and kind of a nice visual representation of how he expects to see the economy of the state gradually reopen now that our vaccination rates are improving. There's also a news release about the governor's plan for economic recovery and revitalization based on the American Rescue Plan passed by Congress recently. And then also, there's an invitation from Senator Sanders' office to participate in an online discussion about the American Rescue Plan tomorrow. So if you're interested, you can register and dial in to participate in that conversation. That's it.
Awesome, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is the generator going to be at the Depot Hill pump station?
It's portable, but.
Also, it's portable.
It's dedicated really to that one, the main one, which takes the most of the flow. But it is usable at either Depot Hill pump station or on even Elm Street's pump station. So all three can handle that generator. And that's why we were, it was part of the bond vote package to purchase a backup generator.
Okay, no, I just, the way you said it, it sounded like it was going there. And if it was going to live there, you'd have to have some kind of a building for it, otherwise it would.
It's portable, it's on a trailer.
It would disappear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything to add? Select board member remarks?
I guess I've got a question. I don't know, it was probably 10 o'clock this morning going down West Creek Road. By Larry Hazelton's, there was a transit set up in the road. Does anybody know what that was for? Somebody surveying, I mean, I don't know if it was land or I didn't, road survey or what it was.
I don't know why that taken place.
I didn't stay in by around it either, Joe, I did see it out there.
You did see it?
Yeah, I had three cones around.
Three cones around it, yeah, it was just sitting there, so.
I didn't see a car or a person or anything, just a transit.
Is it in the road or in the, right away?
Shoulder.
Was, well, it was, the cones were in the road, you had to drive out around them.
That's the first I heard of that.
Okay, well, I didn't, yeah, I just.
And where's the Hazelton place?
West Creek Road.
Just past Markowski's shop.
Okay, yeah.
You know, where the sinkhole was in the road?
Yeah.
Right near there.
Any public comments? But.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Madam Chair. I thought I'd slide in tonight just, just for a minute or two to talk about the ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan funding. As you know, all towns and most towns in Vermont are getting a substantial amount of money. I've seen some numbers for Pittsburgh and I'm sure the manager has those numbers. They're, they're very preliminary, but, but true. The, the way this particular round of funding is going to work, the state's going to get about $1.2 or $3 billion to disperse. And the, the rest of the money is, is direct appropriations to the various, like in your case, communities, to the schools and other entities throughout municipal government in Vermont. So it's a little different than the Corona relief funding where the state got all the money. That's, that's, that's so far, I guess. And I heard the town manager allude to the, the governor's plan for spending some of this money. And as you may, may imagine, the legislature has their own plan for spending the money. And that's sure to be a topic of negotiations with the governor. We're not that far off. But my real reason for, by the way, we're, we're spending money in Mount Kilier like it's growing on trees. This new bill H315 that we passed out this week, we spent $97.5 million, pretty, pretty close to a billion dollars. So this is, believe it or not, it's way more difficult to do a budget when you have money than when you don't have money. Because everybody's at the table looking for money when you have money. So we, yeah, think about that one, think about that for a minute. You may, you may be in that. The, the rules, we still do not have the, the guidance from the federal government for spending at the state level. So I'm reasonably sure, and John, you can back me up, I don't think the municipals have rules yet for the spending and where you can spend the money. It's going to be very, very tight on where you can and can't. I think it's more, I think the municipal money is going to be mostly related to various pieces of infrastructure, whether it's water sewer, highway, buildings, water quality, air quality in buildings. Those, those type of things I think would be targeted for. In H315, which is the house bill where we just spent all the, all the ARPA money, you'll, you'll be pleased to know, I think, and I think this will help you, John, and, and the people that manage the town, there's an appropriation of $950,000 for technical assistance for local government. And, and you will need this assistance for this so that you don't make a misstep and have to pay money back. We, the state, actually, we have, we have, the state has consultants on board to help us spend the money correctly. Of that $950,000, $300,000 is going to the regional planning commissions to assist the towns in, in their quest for this money and, and how you disperse it. $650,000 is going to the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to hire a subcontractor to help the, the communities understand how they can and can't spend the money. And that, to me, is pretty important because the one thing we all don't want, and I'm sure you don't want, is to be clawed back and to make sure that we spend the money in the right places, then discover that you've spent, you know, 70 or 80 or $90,000 on a project you thought was eligible and it's not, and you'll have to pay the money back and we certainly don't want that to happen. So there's a large amount of funds for, to, to help you understand what you can and can't do with the money. I've got no comment on what you do with the money because I don't know the rules yet. I, I don't even know the rules for the state yet, so we're looking forward to that. We don't think that they're going to be coming until sometime in May and by the time the feds, feds get around to it. We also understand the Biden administration is proposing a, who, last I heard, $2.7 billion infrastructure package coming through. Don't know where that's going to go, but if it does, I'm sure that Vermont will be well, well represented at the table with Senator Leahy being chair of the appropriations committee down there. And, you know, we may be able to do some more water sewer work and some more highway work. But we look for, I, I look forward to that because even though, even though my, I had grandkids, my grandkids' grandkids will be paying for this. I sure do want to make sure that we, as a state and our communities, are, are well represented at the table when this, this, this money comes available to us. So it's kind of a quick and down and dirty of, of what we're doing with, with that, that kind of money right now. Legislature's plugging along, we still have a May 14th adjournment date. And the bills that we really, really need are in the Senate and we're waiting for the bills to come back so that we can negotiate. And thank you for your time and nice tables, by the way.
All right, I guess I'll skip around a little bit so I can get to let you guys get out of here. Maybe we could start with the adopting the local hazard mitigation plan.
Sure, as you know, Alicia, there was a committee consisting of several town staffers and people outside of staff like Kevin Blow. He worked with the regional planning commission as kind of the facilitator of the process to update the town's local hazard mitigation plan, which, as you may recall, is required every five years to remain in the good compliant category as far as FEMA is concerned for reimbursement future disaster events. And so we had several meetings of the group and everyone participated quite well. We generated a draft, which then had a couple of public hearings associated with it. Without much input from the public, the consultant Stephanie Borg forwarded it to Vermont Emergency Management Office. They have given the thumbs up to it. And now, before it can go to FEMA, they simply need an adoption resolution from the select board.
Okay.
I think Kevin had something he'd like to say.
Yeah, did you guys all look at it?
Yeah.
And you went through the document, which I was good with everything, I'm sure, everything but one thing.
Okay.
That, that has been kind of bothering me and I did ask about it on the map. We, we chose not to have any river corridor language in the document. And on the map in pink, it shows all our rivers and the river, the river corridors on the map. And the regional actually produced the map. And the state of Vermont, I guess that's the way they look at the map and they decide what are river corridors and what aren't. And I just really think that it shouldn't be on our document or in our document at all.
Why, what are the implications of it staying in there?
I would probably say if, if we're not putting river corridor language, we chose not to put it in our document. And it's going to be on the map and it shows all, all our rivers, like stuff by you, Furnace Brook, it just shows everything is a river corridor, which we chose not to put in our document. And I'm afraid if it ends up in there in the future, we'll probably wish that maybe it didn't, I guess. So I was thinking to avoid confusion and conflict on the map, the river corridor should be removed prior to accepting the plan.
Okay.
It might be an issue that can be clarified with Stephanie. I think it's one thing to simply identify a river corridor, meaning simply the passage of a river over land, through land. It's a different thing to require the town to take any action pro or against how to develop, if at all, those river corridors. And I think that the commission that worked on this was careful to say no. The select, the, the planning commission has never chosen to adopt river corridor protection policies. And so I think that she certainly understood that the town was not interested in doing that. So I think if I, if you wanted to, you could simply adopt it tonight pending clarification from her that this does not require any action. pending clarification from her, that this does not require any action to protect or take any other steps with regard to the river corridor. I think she's just showing where the river, rivers are.
Okay.
But, you know, that bears clarification.
Yeah, no.
And I originally did bring this up.
Yes.
And I asked, but I didn't know exactly how it was going to go, and she, she just answered, that's how the state looks at it. And I just, I kind of disagree. Having, having the, the map show river corridors, if we don't have it, we don't even have it in our town plan.
Yeah, I got you.
And we made sure of that.
Well, now the.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Is, my question would be, is the option open for the town to not participate? Or is it, it's not open?
To have the river corridor language? Yes.
You know, it, it is open that you could bypass that.
That's right. That's right.
And why in the world, didn't they?
I don't know, because the map is still in there, and it was left, left that one.
Looks to me like somebody at some point said, uh, the heck with those guys, uh, we're not going to let them opt out of it and put it in.
I don't think, I don't think that's the case, Joe, but I think I could easily clear it up with a phone call or an email to Stephanie tomorrow. Um, I think design or displaying what a river corridor looks like on a map, it does not mean that there's any obligation on the town to take any steps, uh, one way or the other with respect to that. I think all the plan says, again, she has the checklist of things that she wanted us to consider. Um, in some cases, it says the town shall do this, the town shall do this. But in the case of river corridors, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think we persuaded her that the language should read that the town will consider possible, uh, river corridor protection, but that's all we have to do is consider it. Doesn't mean we have to do it. So i- i- if it's agreeable, I think that's just, we might be arguing about something that's not an issue.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
And I was just wondering why it was on, you know, why it doesn't need to show it.
And, and I, and I'll be happy to get that answer and it, give you an email summary of what she's told the or, or the direct email.
Okay. So that's.
Do we have to act on this now, or can we wait till we find out what the ruling might be?
You can certainly wait. I don't think there's any time that we're up against. So if you wanted to table it, we could.
Uh, that would be, it's just not going to create a problem. I would say let's, let's get this squared away before we. It may not make any difference.
Yeah.
I served on the Rules Making Committee, uh, years ago for water quality, and I'll tell you, uh, Tony Monica was Commissioner for Forests and Parks, and, uh, we, we had him dr, uh, fishing in a dry brook, trying to figure, trying to figure out what was a stream and what wasn't.
I hope he has license.
Turned out.
Okay, well, we can certainly do that.
And if we're going to take the time to look at it a little more, and, and also the fact, I guess she did put that there was, um, like, funding sources could have been in there that weren't. And how important do you feel that is going forward?
At the same time, it would.
Okay, yeah.
Make more for the table.
What, what funding sources are you talking?
Uh, so, yeah, she, she just, she had said two, there was two, like, pieces of areas of improvement that she had stated in that, um.
And she being the person from the Vermont Emergency Management area.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just telling Stephanie that it looks like a good product, but here's how it could be even better.
And then, yeah, she, uh, uh, potential project funding sources could be added, for example, FEMA, BRIC, C-R-I-C, um, is a potential funding source for culvert replacements and green infrastructure where community assets are at risk. And I don't know what the, I don't know what those implications are for having that and not having it in, but.
No, I think it just gives us a better roadmap. So if somebody's picking this up for the first time, and they want a checklist of things to do.
Yep.
Okay, we want to do this culvert, where am I going to find the money? Here's the list.
Yeah, so it's like grant, it's grants.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of identifying where we can go to do the things we, we might like to do.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Oh.
But, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, there's, just, just, just so you know, there is statutory language regarding the river corridors and, uh, buffer zones and what you can and can't do in a river corridor in, uh, the state, uh, has an extensive library on every, every, as, as Joe said, on every stream, some have fish, some don't, uh, uh, with, within the town. So, but there, there is definitely statutory language regarding, uh, river corridors that, uh, should you adopt that is, uh, and I think as the chair has indicated, there, there could be financial, uh, uh, incentives for, for, for the towns. And I, and I know y'all don't, and neither do I, but y'all don't like what, sometimes what the state has to say, but they typically will put a carrot on the end of your stick, so.
So there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a formula that determines what percentage of reimbursement in a disaster the state and FEMA will pay for. And the only big ticket way for us to improve our score would be to adopt river management, river corridor management standards. But we've always said, that's too much of a price to pay to lose local control. Stephanie was made aware of that position.
Yeah. And so, but it, but it's similar to what you do with the highways when you adopt the.
Yes.
The, the town highway program, you get an extra ten percent.
Right.
On, on your grants. So, yeah, there's, there's typically financial incentives for, for doing this for you. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Good.
Well.
Thank you.
And that was part of what I wanted to bring up. The other, and I think probably where most of your concern is, is, and I mean, most from my work down at Regional and, and on the Planning Commission, most of this river corridor stuff makes sense, because you don't want people building a house where it floods. The question is, is to whether the maps are right or not. That is where the problem exists, as far as I could always tell in this. And without a lot of work by the Planning Commission going through and making sure these maps are right, I agree with you. We, we probably shouldn't be adopting them until, you know, we get boots on the ground and say, yes, this truly is an area that floods.
Because it's open for interpretation.
Because it's open, because I have chunks of land that I have never seen flood in my sixty some odd years, yet they claim they're a flood area. So, you know, there are inaccuracies in the maps, and I think from my time on the Planning Commission, I think that was always our greatest concern, is if the things aren't accurate, we shouldn't be adopting them. And I don't know how we go about making them accurate. But like Butch and, and John have alluded to, by doing this, um, stuff, we do get another, it adds more, if there's a, if there's a major disaster, it adds to our check. So there is that incentive to doing it. But again, um, it's making sure the maps are right. That's the bottom line.
Well, and.
And that'll take time.
Yeah. On top of that, none of the rivers are even named. If you look at the map closely, none of the roads are named. There's a lot wrong with the map.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
You know, and I'm not saying, you know, maybe it could be cleaned up. I don't, I don't know. But I mean, that's, with the entire document, that's the only thing that I had to bring up.
Yep.
And just to make you aware of, and you can choose what you want to do, you know? But I just, I don't think people realize their, their properties in river corridors. That's how the state's looking at it. And I just, if, if it's adopted, you know, then you're saying, yes, that's, it's in the document. You have a river corridor in your backyard.
Right. And, and again, I'll ask for clarification from Stephanie about that.
And there, and there was a motion to table it.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All three are saying aye, aye, you opposed?
We just have a good night.
Yeah, you do.
You too, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
See ya.
Bye. All right, I'll skip around to new business. So Chief Warfel, uh, proposal regarding truck detail.
We're going to talk about that if it's all right in executive session since it's contractual.
Okay. All right.
I think it'll be, I'm trying to keep you out of here.
Okay, so then let's do, uh, update and purchase of land for relocated Florence Fire Substation.
Yes, um, the town manager and Omea have signed the purchase and sale agreement, which starts a thirty day clock ticking toward a closing. Um, Gary Cuffer is doing the title work for the town, and, um, Omea has generated a proposed deed. Um, I guess the next steps might be, um, to develop a list of the features we want in this building and maybe talking to the zoning officer about the permitting process for that kind of a building that we decide on, but that's, will be discussions coming up. Um, more immediately, I guess the question would be, oh, from where do we want to take the twenty thousand dollar purchase price? Uh, there's a regular, you know, fire department budget, there's a fire department capital budget, which has usually been used for truck replacement, or there's, I guess, other options. Be happy to hear any guidance about that.
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, we've got personally, I know Butch probably backed me up on this, that we believe that's what the Denison Fund was sort of set aside for, that we've never touched, I think, for this type of, uh, project.
You must have muted us. Butch, did you hear it? Tom?
I did, I did hear that. I did hear that. I did hear that. I did heard that, yeah. Uh, and, uh, the fund has been basically untouched, uh, since, since we got it, since we used the fund. It was, uh, it was put away for, for special things by the members of the whole company.
We only touched it one time, as I recall, and that was to put a bathroom in the fire station for twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. And so, but typically the trustees of trouble, of public funds have control of that money. I think we turned that over to them, uh, in the best interest of the fire department. But, uh, I, I mean, if, if the board so deemed so, I, uh, to, to use those funds, I, I have no problem at all. I mean, that's what it's, what it's for.
All right.
Well, how much is in that fund, I guess, is the question.
Ninety seven thousand.
Okay, so it's.
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty healthy fund.
Does anybody know whether, uh, to tap that fund, whether you'll be tapping principal or just interest?
You're going to be tapped in the principal.
Principal.
It'd be nice to have a figure on what the interest is built up.
It's negative.
Never seen you get eight months' interest. Not good. I realized that.
I don't know. I, uh, last time I looked, looked, um, about ninety seven thousand.
Still fits a damn.
Yeah, I think that's right.
They're in shame to deplete that principal if we can possibly avoid it.
Well, we're taking it out of town funds, then.
I've got no problem with that.
Get a vote for that.
No, that seems like a pretty good use of that money.
No, no, why was it, was it stipulated it had to be left in the CD? Why did?
No, no, we, because we, originally it was vested in some money, and it lost some money, and then it's been CD since, so they, they took a terrible hit on it here once. And we didn't want to chant that again, so it's been, as far as I know.
Okay, but then you look at the Berta fund and how much that's grown.
Yeah.
You, you, why, I guess. I mean, if it's just sitting there getting, you know, basically nothing. And if.
Might as well use it towards.
If it's determined, I mean, I guess if it's determined that it can be used for that.
An eligible expense.
It can be.
Yeah. You're, you're the one who took the bequest, right, from Mr. Denison?
Right.
So you know what he was having.
Yeah, well, it's, it's in the will. It, it has to be spent on by, you can't spend that money on anything else.
Oh, so it's strictly for the fire.
Strictly for the fire program.
Okay.
So that falls within that parameter. We could put some of that money towards building the building over there. That's, that's what it's for.
All right. So we would need a motion to ask support the trustees?
Actually, it's, it's not in the trustees.
Okay.
So it's, it's in town funds.
Oh, all right.
That, these funds, I don't know that much about them, but is it possible that they can be, uh, jockeying around to earn more interest? Are they set up to where you just, if you're stuck, you're in a.
I don't know, Hank. Could we, I don't know if we can tie that money in. Did we do some of the other one, on, on the trustees?
It used to be in stocks.
Some of those together?
I know we did.
We can look into that. Trustees can look into.
I wouldn't want to risk losing it.
Keep it separate.
But I wouldn't want to risk.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Appreciating those.
Well, you, it's, it's, it's a gamble either way, Gene. You know, you, if you put it in the stock market, you do risk losing it. However.
With hindsight, it could have doubled over the last five years.
Exactly.
Who knows, but who has a crystal ball?
Right.
And it could, it could go bankrupt tomorrow.
Well, no, that's, yeah, that's the problem, yeah. But it.
Not earning, earning any interest at all, and there was a way to help that, I would be, and isn't, don't we have a, uh?
That's two different issues.
Yeah.
The issue is how we're going to fund purchasing this line right now. We can, we can talk about how to manage the fund.
Yeah.
I mean, you can take it out of your, your equal fund for now. How, how are we going to do it? Because you lost transfer stuff back around. Give us a chance maybe to see what this ninety seven thousand or whatever it is could do.
Yeah.
Give the trustees of public funds a chance to maybe check what the, where the Denison money, or the Berta, Berta money is.
Yeah.
See if we can do something there.
Right, we don't have, we don't have the closing probably for the next meeting.
Okay, so we can just.
Crack at it two weeks from now.
We'll take a crack at it, see what we can do.
Yeah, and in, in the meantime, why don't you, one, find out exactly what there is in there, two, find out, you know, what, what, uh, potential, I mean, if you could make ten percent, get somewhere where it made ten percent a year, ten grand a year.
Yeah, leave it alone.
We'd leave it alone, uh.
Take it out of the other cow for now.
So.
That money actually, we, if we were thinking right, I don't know what, much this topic is talking about, with some of this money that are coming into the town, this might be the perfect opportunity to build your station over there with this federal money that's coming in, that we don't know where they, because you've got to have a plan to, personally, I talked to Mike, there's two things we ought to be looking at. We should be doing it fairly soon, I think, especially with this money, because we, you're going to have a limited time amount, time to spend this money, correct, Butch?
Twenty twenty-four?
Three years.
Year.
Two years.
So we should start the groundwork now for two projects that I see. Tapping the first response building down below where we've got the foundations already in. We talked about that several meetings ago, to, to, to that, where you can get your cruisers down there, give him a nice office right there at that building, foundations all in. So we ought to look into the cost of doing that, and maybe the cost of erecting. The fire station in Florence, it's basically going to be a garage. It's not going to be a fire station like a main station. It could end up being a Butler Building for all I know. It's, it's got to be heated, and it could house, that's it. So that money, I'm sure.
And, and a bathroom, you want a bathroom?
You've got to have a bathroom, you've got to have water.
Yeah.
And same thing down there. You need a bathroom, you need water. So you need these things to heat. So coupled with that money's there, the, the hundred thousand, and what, I don't know if we're talking for money from the state, but I'm sure, but sure.
Well, I, I, can I, can I, 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 can I say one thing? One thing that drives me nuts with the way the town operates is we, we tell the whole world how much money we have to spend before we go out bidding on anything?
No, no.
So can we just not talk about how much money, please?
I'm saying we'll have enough money to do these projects.
Possibly, yes.
Possible, yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I'll just mention is, in none of the, um, rumor mongering I've heard so far, I've seen nothing for, uh, building projects.
No.
I've seen, uh, water and sewer, I've seen broadband, um, I haven't seen anything about building firehouses, that kind of thing.
Or highway bridges.
Oh, yeah, but it's.
I know, maybe.
But I guess, and along that lines, I guess, I mean, you're talking.
We need to start planning. Let's say what we know.
Well, and, and we can always plan, and if it's ten years, it's ten years. But I think the other thing we should look into, you're talking about putting money into the first response, which I get, you've got that there. But I think the other thing we should do, you're building a building in Florence, compare how much it's going to cost to fix up the first response building versus adding a little extra on to that building and putting the police department there. I think, I think those are two options we need to look at. I think we need to look at it both ways.
There's somebody groaning on the camera here.
So, Greg, uh, may, may I?
Yes.
I, I would love to talk to the, uh, board when you're not public, uh, about, about some of these funds, uh, that, that, and I agree with Dave, uh, that there are some, some things that can be done and, and probably should be done on some of these. But I think, I think you, like us in the legislature, are really premature until you get the. get the, until you get the guidelines. How to spend this.
For sure.
And, but I can, I can, I can, I can't advise you anything, but I can inform you as how the legislature handled much of the CRF money and much, or handling much of this ARPA money by, I can inform you how we did that. We actually, we actually were able to reduce our, our state funding in our budgets by replacing, by moving money around or replacing money. So it's, it's, it's not a, anyway, everything we did was perfectly legal, obviously, but there are opportunities available for you, and there will be opportunities available for you coming forward. I'm sure of that, yeah.
All right, great.
So we'll put it on the agenda for further discussion?
Sounds good.
And that, that issue is just from what part of money you'd like to, we can check.
Right.
Okay. All right, so now, idiot compliance report.
Yes, as you know, we have a broken wheelchair lift behind the police chief, which takes people up and down into the basement. And we had the impression that that would need to be repaired or replaced. But we hired a consultant out of Middlebury, who took a top to bottom look at the town office building, had some recommendations, but the takeaway that I take from her report is that, no, since the public does not access that space, it does not need to be replaced, which arguably saves the town the money to replace it even if we were to go out and get a grant, and I suspect we might not even get a grant if.
It's not needed.
We provide the report that says we don't need it.
Sure.
So I think that by the, by the expenditure of fifteen hundred bucks or whatever we invested in this study, we probably ended up saving some money.
Okay.
Not having to replace something that did not need replacing.
So it needs to be removed.
But we can certainly remove it.
I was going to say, it needs to be removed.
Now, are we, because she did find some problems.
No, we had a lot of problems.
She doesn't report anything to anybody, she's just our consultant.
Okay.
So as we do the big long-term thinking, if and when we feel we want to make some changes at the town offices, that would be a wonderful time.
Okay.
To find the funding for it and to do it. But there's nothing that needs to be done right now.
I must assume that some of this compliance stuff has changed since this building was.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
For sure.
I didn't see any big ticket items in there.
No, except for she did, she suggested hiring an ARPA.
That was the case.
We do that room, but that was only.
I think the main thing that we did 10 years ago was to put in that entryway with the glass doors and the push buttons. That really was a good step forward, and that's what we did with a funding grant for voting access. And so that took care of our, our main concern.
We really should go with lever locks.
With what?
Lever locks.
Lever locks, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
They should be all changed right off.
Yeah.
Now, now, would, because we're changing the locks on a lot of these doors, would that be the time to do that, or have we already done that?
I think the keying, the rekeying that took place was limited to the clerk's office, and they in fact now have a lever door.
Oh, they do.
Open to the, for the public to.
You can make, you can make, you can make keys fit whatever you put in there.
Consider retention of Sullivan and Powers as external auditors.
Yes, as you know, we've used that firm for many years now. We stopped doing so, and then we resumed because the experience of using someone else was so difficult and painful.
It was horrendous.
When was that?
About 15 years ago.
Yes.
Before my time. But they have produced a proposal which would cover a unified contract over the next three years, which shows a about a 2.6, 2% 7% increase year after year. And so if the board is agreeable, they'd like us to sign two copies of the retention agreement, which is just the same boilerplate as always, and send them one copy for them to sign and return to us for our records.
So, you know, in just the last few years that I've seen it, they do seem to do a very thorough job, and their person that they have come and explain also does a very good job. Just to, just for like, what, do we know though, like what, is this in a normal ballpark of paying the amount of money that we're paying?
I don't know. I presume that because they have many towns for whom they work, they base it on the size of the job. But I could ask them more about how they come up with the figure, but it's definitely in keeping with all the numbers I've ever seen, which always show about a 2 or 3% increase over the previous year. I'm not sure how they originally got the quote.
Right.
Fifteen, twenty years ago for the original amount, but I presume it has to do with like the population and the type of, odd type of accounting system, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And we, they, we had them when I got on, first got on the board, and we decided we'd switch one year. The worst experience I've ever had on a sledboard, dealing with them accountants. It was horrible.
Okay, well, that, that, okay, and I'm not, I'm not going to contradict you because that's what happened, but I just, I guess it, it concerns me a little bit that you've got the same people doing it year after year after year without every now and then a break just as a check, just as a check.
Arguably, the audit is a check, because they have a lot of standards they have to meet, but I understand where you're coming from. You might want to take your car to a different garage and see if you get a better deal or.
Better deal or better service. I mean, or, or if you've got, you know, something that's, that's going on, and it's just, I mean, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but there is the possibility something gets overlooked year after year, and some, a new set of eyes would pick that up and say, wait a minute, this isn't right.
Well, just to prove you the alternative, I think.
There's audit, not all the same people that come here and do the actual audit.
Chad's been here from the beginning.
Chad, Chad, he's the supervisor, but there's other, when they come in, there's, oh my God, they sit here for.
Four or five days, and it's hugely some new faces.
Yeah, there's new faces.
But in terms of the alternative, if we're looking at that, that would involve us going out with a bid.
You've got a bid.
And then, so we'd have to have a committee to interview these firms, and, you know, I can, I can try to pretend to know how to interview an auditor, but I can't say that I would have the most sophistication in doing so.
All right.
I've been happy with them.
I mean, they do do.
I've been happy with them too, I think they've done a good job for us over the years.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
Generally, you get what you pay for.
What we could do is, we could ask them to, if they have ways to address this concern by, you know, trying to have more different personnel involved, or to focus on different issues than they might normally do, just to kind of mix it up a little. I could ask him if that kind of thing is possible, and I'll let him know, just the concern is that we might get too cozy with them, how could you mix it up for us?
John, could, would the league, the city and towns be able to give you any suggestions or any guidance as to?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I don't know.
It would hurt to ask them if they had any kind of checklist on what to look for when hiring an auditor?
We, we might be able to do better, but maybe not. We, we're getting along fine the way we are, but are we paying too much? I don't know.
Well, certainly not over year to year, because we can go back 10, 12 years and look at all the increases, and however they got the original number, it's been going up very modestly with basically the cost of inflation.
I follow you there, and it makes sense. But sometimes it's good to just look around a little bit.
At the risk of kicking too many cans into the next meeting, we can do some of this research, I talk with Chad about how he might give us a more right center field position examination as opposed to the usual left field one, just to kind of make sure that we're getting our tires kicked thoroughly, something like that. And then meanwhile, I can ask the LCT if they have any guidance on how to recruit and, and hire an auditing firm.
They do give you a lot of assistance.
They do, they do. That's just a question that's never come up, and I'm glad you've suggested it, it doesn't hurt for me to ask. Is that a plan that you'd like to follow?
Sure, we can wait till next meeting.
Yep.
We're not, we're not up against a deadline or anything.
No, no.
All right, highway access right away permit for Green Lantern Solar?
Yeah, they're actually acting on behalf of the Colburn folks on that solar project. Chad has met with Green Lantern on site and suggested that they should take down some brush as a condition of getting the permit for the Colburn household. Based on that condition, he's recommending approval.
But we give approval.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you send me that permit?
Yes.
That project dates back quite a while, don't it?
Right.
That's been over a year, seemed like, well, they take forever. Just stood still, yeah, then all of a sudden it'll be built. Oh, that's, yeah, it's bizarre.
Consider developing a town map for economic development purposes.
Yes, I don't know about you folks, when you moved to town, or maybe some of us, but one of the things I remember wanting but not having available was kind of a roadmap of the town, not just a roadmap, but something that might show some natural features as well. And as I've taught some economic development, and as I've researched map possibilities, regional planning tells me that they're able to, with their databases, generate any number of ingredients into a colorful map that would show roads, rivers, other features, maybe even businesses. And it's the kind of thing that I think they said for a thousand bucks, they could propose a product after doing some of this overlay work, and then ultimately, we could take it to a printer and have, you know, a fold out map that could be available. As you know, or may know, the village farm and the library are working together on something like a welcome kit for new residents, and so that might be a nice addition for new people. But also, it'd be great, I think, to have at the town clerk's office, or in any of our offices, people want to know, whoa, I never heard of this road, where is it? And I was just thinking, that seemed like a pretty modest investment to have something that could be useful to a lot of people, even in this GPS smartphone era.
GPS don't work, John.
I was going to say, look at Ome. So the thousand dollars is.
It's an estimate of the time it would take for him to generate.
But they said the town wouldn't be liable for anything over a thousand, correct? They estimated eleven and a half hours, but we wouldn't be liable for anything over a thousand.
That's right.
So that would definitely, and would that price include businesses? Because I mean, that would definitely be, I think, for it to have all the businesses on there.
The problem, the problem there only is that, well, if you put one business, you better make sure you have them all.
Yeah.
And there's lots that come and go. So maybe, maybe you'd prefer to do historical features, things like historical society, library, those fundamental, you know, kind of stakeholders in town, rather than the latest restaurant that tries to open on Route Seven, because that'll be out of date in a year or two. That, that's the concern.
Yes, but that's the economic development piece, if we have all the businesses on there that people may want to try for the first time that don't.
You know what originally got me started on that was seeing in Brandon and elsewhere, those cartoonish maps. And that's apparently a franchise situation, where someone can get the franchise, and the headquarters, I guess is up in Waitsfield, but they're all around the country. And you can buy a franchise, and then you have the authority to generate your cartoon map and listing the businesses, who all pay a fee for inclusion.
I see.
And I certainly don't have the time to do that, but if and when we wanted to, our, you know, economic development person, they might be interested. But again, that's a franchise thing that maybe the town wouldn't want to get involved in. That's why I'm a little bit reluctant to commit to businesses. Maybe if there's like anchors, like long-term things like Keith's and Kamuta's versus a hair salon that might come or go in a private house, it's about, it's about line drawing.
And I don't think that was, those business, I'm sorry, I don't think those businesses are on those maps anyways. Like, we're just going to use that example.
No, but, but, but they're aware of it because of the village designation member of several years ago, we gave them a listing at least as of that time, as to what there was within the contours of Plains Road to Arch Street.
Yeah.
On Route Seven.
But I guess if you're, if you're talking economic development, you, and I don't know, it shouldn't be that hard to do, you've got buildings that are, well, through by a susie's owned or whatever, that can have businesses in them. So rather than put specific businesses, put the buildings down that are available.
Commercial buildings.
Commercial buildings that are available to have a business, whether they have one in it or not. If you listed the buildings and then you used the zoning map in the areas, and, and you start taking out the conserved lands and whatever that are in those areas, or developments or whatever, and then these are the blocks of land where possibly something could go because the topography is right and this and that are right, that, I think, would help you as far as economic development.
How about this, how about on one side, you have the whole town map with historical municipal buildings, streets, roads, mountain peaks, what have you, the whole town. And then on the other side, maybe there's an inset with the village, or some way to depict businesses or commercial buildings, that way you have both purposes served. Without it being maybe too busy on a single map.
Well, you, you're going, if you put it all on one map, it'll be too busy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we should probably think about this a little more, not to go yet another thing forward, but I mean.
I think we ought to jump right into it.
You think you should jump right into it?
I think we got a volunteer to make the map.
Joe's got something.
Let me hear your map. Thousand bucks, whatever you do.
When we were talking about a rec director, we talked about maybe that person might be involved in something else. Are we bypassing that person at this point? Or didn't we ever follow through on that?
The current rec director is performing some economic development work.
And would this fall into something that that person might ought to be aware of or is involved in?
Certainly, yes.
But this would be.
It would be good to involve whoever's serving in the economic development office to be involved in this.
Yes.
But I was just taking the initiative in the meantime. If you'd like, again, given that we're talking a pretty modest investment here, I could talk to Mr. Shield, ask him to get started, and maybe halfway through, zoom into us, share his screen with us, and show us all the different possibilities, and see if we can derive a consensus of what the final product might look like.
But we also look into it and find that it's cheaper to do that, the graphic map like Brandon has.
I could, I could talk to the franchise company in Waitsfield, I suppose, and find out more about their process.
Yeah.
But that would involve, that would involve really knocking on every business's door and soliciting them for contributions, and that might not be something that the town wants to do. I don't know.
But it, I mean, having information on it is not a bad thing.
I agree, I agree.
You know, and I think going along with what Joe said, I think this map would be good for the economic development person to have. And, and rather than them, you know, no matter who that person is, it would be good for the town to have it for them to be able to use. That would be a big step up for them, because if somebody gets hold of them as economic development, hey, you know, I'm looking to, you know, move to Vermont, and I'm looking for a building that, you know, I can put X business in. He can look on the map, hey, we got one right here, it's not being used, come look at it.
That's also, yeah, you're right, possibly an overlay with zoning districts and that kind of thing.
Right, yeah.
I guess that's two, two different visions, which I think can be accommodated on reverse sides of the document.
Right.
Because for me, it was about having homeowners have a nice representation of their town and newcomers as to how to get around Pittsburgh, and what's there to see and do.
Well, you see, for me, economic development is bringing business here to pay some taxes.
I'm not opposed to that by any means.
So I think, even though, I think it's a great idea, there's a lot of great ideas about this, and then, and even though it's a modest amount, I still think we should maybe hold off so we kind of. And then, and even though it's a modest amount, I still think we should maybe hold off till we kind of think about it more.
So tell me, what, tell me what information you want? You want to find out more about this franchise possibility?
That would be great.
Cartoon map.
Yeah, like if, because if, yeah, finding out like what, what the buy-in is for businesses to be on the map.
Yep.
And then, yeah.
Okay. Happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the input.
All right, then I guess lastly, discuss, discuss potential changes to select board meeting format and periodic reporting from department heads. That would be me. And John, that was, I appreciate this list that you, you drafted or wrote up. But I wasn't thinking anywhere near that like wide or formal.
I was gonna give you kind of a full menu of options.
No, yeah, and I appreciate it. And certainly I don't want to make more work for any of the department heads or micromanaging anyway. I just thought it would be yet another, another way to disseminate information. You know, you know what I mean? Like, what came to come up and what had really spurred this idea for me was specifically the rec department, because with the new rec director, there was a whole bunch of big changes. And, yeah, it just would have, you know, been nice to hear about them in more real time.
Yeah, throughout the year, there are times that we hear from people, obviously, when there's something big pending or a discussion to have with highway, for example, Chad is available to participate in the meetings. Same is true of the rec. I know Randy used to give presentations after town meeting to kind of give us an update and a work plan for the year ahead. And if he had a special project or needed to purchase something.
Yep.
He would come forward. But again, certainly if you want to have a more regularized and scheduled thing, all I would need to know is what department heads you'd like to hear from, how you'd like to hear from them, and how frequently you'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, and I looked at, what's some, I mean, some, I looked at some of our surrounding towns, and some do it every week, some do it once a month, some do it just whenever there's something pressing come up. And so I don't know, I don't necessarily, certainly don't think anyone has to be here on a regular basis.
I would say we leave it, we leave it as a non-call.
Non-call. But I just, I guess there is just, and I don't mean to like just keep sticking out the rec, it just happened to be that that was, there was like a switch over, and there was big changes, and, you know, it would have been nice to hear.
Certainly, those people have opportunities to communicate to the public in our quarterly newsletters and on the website. But I certainly don't object to, if you would like to have, you know, especially with a new employee, for example.
Yes.
So make sure that they're getting settled, if you wanted to hear from them more often, that's certainly possible. While I generally have developed the agenda week to week, I'm more than happy to have anybody with suggestions as to what should be on the agenda and when.
Yep. All right, so just kind of playing it by case by case and see how it goes.
That's my, my thought.
Yeah.
It's been this way forever. We don't have a problem, but boy, once you start trying to micromanage, you're gonna ask for problems.
Well, this is about micromanaging and asking anybody.
To develop individuals.
Right, because I didn't even, like, I wasn't even asking people to report to us. I just am thinking about like, so people are.
Well, so these. So, I mean, I.
Yeah, Town Close by was, we ran it several years ago, where it turned into a cluster. Their meetings were just, I mean, it got to be a laughing stock of the whole county, that we certainly don't want.
And what was that dynamic just by having like the highway form in there?
Oh, yeah.
Take potshots?
Yeah, it got to be, yeah, it got to be.
Proctor, I believe you're talking.
So.
Go ahead.
But anyway, I mean, I think, like, and I'll use different departments. It would be nice, you know, we send close to eight grand a month to the library. It would be nice at least once a year if the library came in and reported to us what's going on. But no, but that's, again, the rec department, spring, summer, winter, fall, so that we know this is what we're doing for the spring.
Yeah.
And then this is, it, you know, that's, I think, well, I'm not speaking for Alicia, but I think that's more what she had in mind.
Chairman, I think the decision is up to you, it's your meeting, you have what you want.
Well, I wanted to hear what everyone else, you know, I'm not, I just wanted to hear what anyone else, everyone else thought too. But I do, I mean, I think four times a year, but even, like, I don't, I guess that would be the next step that I, I, I wasn't even thinking about most of these people, you know what I mean?
I didn't know who exactly you had in mind. I didn't know, for example, I think you may have mentioned that Brandon, police chief, is frequently interacting with the select board.
I know, that wasn't me.
But again, as you say, we can certainly ask the rec director to come and give quarterly reports maybe almost at the same time that he develops his quarterly newsletter, because there isn't one spring, summer, fall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just another avenue to get the information out. Again, I don't want it to, I don't even like that, really, that term reported, not like they're reporting to us, just like letting, getting more information out to Pittsburgh.
Forum of the town meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like board meetings, this, I mean, because, you know, there's the potential for people to watch us on here. Which is our only audience, but, you know.
He's not even listening.
You know, he's sleeping.
I'll turn my tone a little bit.
Now, besides rec, were there anyone else that you wanted a more routine invitation from?
So I, I know, and I've talked to Shelley, she's more than welcome to come and talk.
I guess I don't view that as a, as a town governmental thing, that's just a recipient of town.
She gives a very good report for the coming report.
Yeah, but she would like to come to the meeting.
She's certainly welcome.
And I kind of like the quarterly thing, I think that's more than adequate.
Oh, even with her, twice a year. You know, I mean, depending on different departments, different, you know.
Maybe an email to her, letting her know that this forum is available to her. We'd love to serve as a conduit for her communicating to the community.
Yeah.
And let us know when you'd like to be on the agenda.
Right, because honestly, other than anything untoward or, you know, out of the ordinary, which ends up in your, in the town manager's report anyways, I almost really, yeah, I think the rec and the library, just because those are.
Programming.
Programming, getting the information out there, so.
I will make sure that the invitation is made clear to the library folks, and I will ask the rec director to give those quarterly programming updates.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
This count for me tonight.
Perfect, perfect.
Keeping him off his bedtime.
All right, well, then that ends the open meeting portion. We'll go into executive session.